It is, I believe, the 30th of October. Happy almost Halloween, everyone. Um, I know Patrick's still setting up. Anyone have adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on. Um, again, welcome. I would like to welcome Vince Hickey back to the commission from Berkshire.
Thank you.
And I'll go around with introductions this way. Please. Bill Erwin, Bakersfield.
Al Russo, Albert.
Kathy La Boy, Restore Justice.
Bob German, South Doral.
Barclay Morris, Grand Isle.
Harold Garrett, Towne Swan.
Alanis Cangius, St. Albans City.
Linda Gisborne, Morrie Rupaul, Elizabeth Nance, Watson, Village.
Renene Brown, Ridgeford.
Karen DeGruel, Albert.
Wesley Kempson, Franklin.
Taylor Newman, staff.
What a albo jelsa, Sam's down with me as my nephew. Eric Henry Murphy, Eddie Murphy from last one.
Sir Hadson.
Leader, Chair, Eunice Ford, Bill.
Vincent Hickey for Berkshire.
Paul Sharon, Berkshire.
Yvonne Dandran, Franklin.
Richard Noel, Highgate.
Catherine Dimitriak, staff.
And Kirk Wade from Georgia. Again, thank you, everyone.
And Emily.
Yes, Emily, well, Mercavigista serving at Annacres.
Where are we on here?
How is that?
We're trying to set it up, it might.
Are we putting projector on top of there and computer down here?
Sure. But I think it might end up shining over your heads. You might want to move to the next table over.
While we're waiting for it to set up, does anyone have any public comment? Hearing none, we'll get set up. And then we've got a guest here this evening, Kathy La Boy, to discuss Restore Justice Centers. We could. If no one has any objection, we can move on to the minutes and then come back.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
You're not getting a presentation on the standard terms and conditions of Department of Commerce grants, don't worry.
Wow, that sounds really good. That's good news.
Oh, I might drop that now.
That's why you came, right?
Yeah.
The memories.
Yeah, every second, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, it's on the table.
If you push it closer, it'll just.
Yeah. We're going to have Kathy. Go on. There you go. All right.
Move the table, move the table to the right. Bunch of backseat.
Someone messed with these settings, not square.
How's that look?
Perfect.
Yeah.
Eliza wants to know if you can get the World Series on that.
You got 55 minutes.
Yes, you should.
Am I going to get a motion to adjourn? I'm giving it to you right now.
No break.
Here, shift.
I must feel like.
What do you want to?
Do I turn it?
Eight oh eight. We're going to get home.
Just had word on, right?
Okay, so, like every well-aid plan, I forgot all of the copies back at the office when I got, once I got back here. So it was either deciding to go for my walk, go back to the office, and you guys lost. But thank you for setting this up. I'm Kathy La Boy. I was the executive director for Workforce Investment for Franklin and Grand Isle County for many years. And I've been in workforce development for several years. And as of January, I started at the Franklin Grand Isle Restorative Justice Center, and I'm a program manager there. But my focus and reason for taking the job was because the state of Vermont was looking for a workforce development project pilot that we could test in some area, region of the state. And in specifically working with a demographic that is under the Department of Corrections on probation, parole, or FSU. And so this idea had been discussed in this region, actually, for many years. And finally, we had a stream of funding and somebody to jump on board to do it. So the, we knew that individuals under the Department of Corrections certainly need as much support as anybody else as far as workforce development. And we also know that the trades, construction and all of the other related trades are one of the most desperate industries in the state and across the nation as far as needing people. So we decided to build a construction program for those, those guys on probation and parole. We also decided, at the same time that I was building this, I'm part of the Vermont Talent Pipeline Management, that had worked with the tech centers across the state and the construction employers across the state. And now all of our technical centers in the state that are delivering a building trade program to our young adults are using the NCCER curriculum, National Center for Construction, Education, and Research. And it's a core curriculum around the construction trades, and it comes with national credentials, not just certifications, but national credentials. So I knew immediately that I was not going to put together a project and not give these guys and gals the same level of credentialing that they were competing with for the young guys and gals coming out of our programs across the state. So we decided to do that. We launched the program in May. We had somewhere around 15 guys that showed up in the first meeting. I scared away about four of them right up front and after we had done the vetting. And by the time we got to the real launch of the program, we had nine guys. I am sharing names here, obviously. You may recognize some, but they all agreed to doing this. So over the course of about two and a half months, nine guys ultimately completed a two-tiered program in construction. We delivered hand, basic hand tools, basic power tools, basic safety, OSHA 10, basic communications, and basic employability skills, all in tier one in a classroom setting. Our teachers came from Northwest Tech Center. They're, they're certified in, in teaching at the NCCER curriculum and through Vermont Adult Learning. And then during tier two, we had created the program so there'd be a very fine delineation between tier one and tier two, found out very quickly that we needed to kind of combine the two and jumpstart the hands-on work experience. But within tier two, we delivered the curriculum of construction materials, construction math, and construction drawings. The tier one level is meant to serve any industry. All of those courses that are taken under the curriculum for construction, certainly are transferable in a whole host of other industries, manufacturing, automotive, a whole host of them. The other three courses, of course, are more specific to math, I mean, to construction, but certainly could be used. So by the end of the program, we had over, nine guys had received 98 national certifications in construction and eight, excuse me, credentials in construction and eight certifications in OSHA 10. So it was quite a big achievement. I do have one guy that is trying to finish up the last of his programming, and he's working on that now. During the time, each of these individuals were eligible for WEOA funds, which is a federal funds Workforce Investment and Opportunity Act. And those federal funds are a pass-through to the state. And because of various criteria that they met, they were eligible for WEOA funding. And so that meant that in the classroom and on the job site, they were able to collect minimum wage. So it was a great incentive for these guys beyond any others that they have because they weren't being paid for it. The onboarding process was quite, was much more challenging than we had envisioned because we ran into some things that we hadn't expected, but we now know are being addressed at the state level. And that's why these pilot projects are always great. We found out that we had a whole bunch of guys coming out of the system. They've been in facilities for years, and they had no ID. And you cannot collect federal funds without having sufficient ID. So obviously, the first question was, how come they've been sitting in facility for 10-plus years and more and didn't have sufficient ID? So that is being addressed, and we now have the Department of Corrections making sure these guys and gals are coming out with sufficient ID so that we can support them. The other thing we found out is that some of them had not signed up for the selective service and that they weren't eligible for federal funds. So we had to go to the feds to get waivers on selective service. So that, again, is something that now the Department of Corrections will be looking at, and they have the guys in facility to make sure they either sign up or some of them aren't even eligible.
So you mean ID, they didn't even have social security?
What's this?
They didn't even have social security numbers.
The ID.
No, they had numbers.
Oh.
They had numbers, but they didn't have ID to per numbers. So, um, tier, tier two of the program was meant to be the hands-on piece of the program. We looked at some various projects at St. Albans City, they didn't come to fruition, and ultimately decided that we would build two big rustic sheds, kind of Amish sheds, one for Martha's Kitchen in St. Albans and the other one for the Hardak Recreation Area in St. Albans. And we started tier two. I don't know if I have that, can't remember either. But when we, when the individuals completed tier one, each of them were furnished a complete tool belt with a set of tools that would be sufficient for anybody to start in the labor market of construction. And those were provided through vocational rehabilitation funds. So the other partner in this not only was the Department of Labor, but it was Voc Rehab coming through the human services sector. So they each received their tool belt because they completed tier one of classroom time, and we started off on the job site. The other thing that we discovered is NCCER, when combined with OSHA 10 and overlap in the two curriculums, they were able to deliver those, that curriculum in two six-hour days as opposed to a 15-hour class and a 10-hour OSHA 10 class. So that is something that we are approaching the national organization of OSHA to see if it can be a continual thing that is done. So again, sometimes these, these pilot projects, you discover, you know, national and statewide issues that you can, can also do. Over the course of year number one for completion, they also received two $300 bonuses. That money came directly through a grant that I had secured from the Vermont Department of Labor, a $75,000 grant to, to work on this project. And the guys in tier one received $300 as an additional incentive to stay in and to meet their bills. This picture is some of them on the job site. This is at Martha's Kitchen, and you'll see the small shed that's in the background over here on the bottom and up there. The other one is the larger shed that we built for Hardak. And then you see some pictures in the classroom. The guys typically tended two to three times a week were in the classroom, and two to three times a week were sitting in, were out on the job site. The most difficult thing that we had and is challenging for this population is how busy that they are. And I know that that's something that a lot of people don't know. I certainly didn't know until I started working with these guys and gals. But on a daily basis, often, most of them are on medically assisted treatment, so they're having to go to, to their doctors to get their treatment. Many of them are going to counselors two and three times a week. Many of them are also doing DOC programming that is mandatory. So they have a whole host of things. So for those guys and guys to me, a 20 to 30-hour work week was almost, it was pushing them to their max. But we did it, and it was actually a great restorative process to see them all in a room hashing out what the calendar would be one month after another. Here they are again on the job site at Martha's Kitchen. The other restorative practice that was here that we knew would come, but it was really amazing to watch, is you see a couple of these guys in these pictures working so closely. And obviously, before they came together, some of them didn't know each other, and now they're stuck in this really intensive training and workplace program together. But the more challenging thing is, I see two heads together here in one of these pictures where not only did they know each other, but they really didn't like each other. And once again, they're sitting on a job site and in a classroom, and they're having to, to put up with it. So it really became very restorative in that, in that sense as well. Ultimately, sheds were completed by August 6th, actually, the day of August 6th. And that night, we moved the biggest shed that ultimately had to be moved anyways up to Hardak. We moved it up Lake Street, which, which really became to be the most challenging thing of this entire pilot, was to get that big shed up, up Lake Street and to the park in St. Albans for National Night Out. It was really, again, a great experience for these guys. It puts a lot of them in a, in a place and in a public setting that they really weren't used to, and yet they absolutely learn from it. This here, they continued to do on-the-job training at Martha's Kitchen, working, putting in some windows and so forth. And over the course of the second tier of hands-on, they received an additional, an additional $1,200 in bonuses that came through the grant money as well. The bonus tier that we had done was based upon the amount of time that they really participated. Unfortunately, I realized really early that our logic was a little bit flawed, and the guys that put in the least amount of hours actually got a higher per hour rate than the guys that didn't because of the bonuses. So we're going to modify that. But we did have two guys that did not get the second $600 bonus, they only got 900 total. And, you know, to have the group decide that they weren't eligible because they hadn't participated enough, again, was a really, a big deal for these guys to do as a team. And they got two guys that didn't get an extra 600 bucks, really conceded to the fact that they had an errand debt. So again, the training went well beyond anything we taught them in instruction. Throughout the program, we did complete wraparound services, and I think that for the general public and for those that are more conservative-minded, that is the big win here. It takes a lot of time, a lot of money for, to work with these guys and gals one-on-one, to help them get through transportation issues, to help them get through medical issues, to help them get to where they have to go, to help them, housing issues, all very serious life stuff that we take for granted. So the intensive amount of time that it took to work with them is really what the, the grant money went towards, was to work with these guys. In the end, we placed almost all of them, and here is the list. Some of this has changed, and that's the biggest thing about this demographic, is the sustainability. But some of it is not because of them either, so don't, you know, think into that too much. Most of them, of course, were not working, and so over the, through their placement, the average wage increase was $12.20. So that's a pretty big deal. They went into roofing companies, they went into drywall, the Vermont Structural Buildings hired one, city of St. Albans, there's one part-time. One is in private businesses with his father in construction, another one is going through the micro-business program so that he can become self-employed. I don't happen to think that's the best idea for him, but that's what he wanted. Walmart, another guy really wanted just the curriculum to boost up his resume because he really wants to be in the electronics department at, at Walmart and ultimately go into computer repair. And then we had another guy that interviewed at St. Albans Glass, and we're still waiting on that. But so, the course of those two months, two and a half months, again, they received 68 national credentials combined, OSHA 10 on eight of them, and then all, you know, some of them are making 60, 50, 60 bucks an hour now. The other issue that we had to deal with was transportation, which was huge. Only one of them had a license. Three of them enter into a DLS program that the Restorative Justice Center does, and with that, those three contracts, those three guys were able to lower their fines by $6,800. And all three of them should have their licenses within the next month. Before that, they were literally looking at years without licenses. The other thing that we were able to do is we took the curriculum from the NCCER, we aligned it with the proficiency-based learning requirements here in the state of Vermont. We had three guys that did not have diploma, and those three guys, we wanted to start it sooner, but they had a lot on their plate. So those three guys, I am still pushing for them to work with Vermont Adult Learning to get their high school diploma. And I believe that two of them probably would get their diploma just based upon the proficiencies they met through the NCCER curriculum. So if we can get that completed, we'll have three more guys with diplomas. And then, of course, when doing a pilot project, you're always worrying about cost, why wouldn't you? And here is the direct cost. This doesn't have anything to do with, with my time, this is directly for these guys. You know, we spent anywhere from $2,400 to about $4,000 apiece over the course of two and a half months. We all know that's a fraction of what it cost, a minor fraction of what it costs to have these guys in facility. And now, for the most part, they're all, you know, at least have the tools to be self-sufficient. And the program all, overall, with state funding, federal funding, and some bonus money in the grants, was about $32,000. Does not include my time and, of course, other people's time. So there you have it. This is meant for DOC and the rest of us that are now doing our, our learnings and our plannings and what our next steps are. I'm already starting to go around the state and discuss how we can roll this out and what other communities might be able to do. The good thing about the pilot is I structured it so that it doesn't need to be this demographic, it doesn't need to be the guys on probation and parole, but we now know that it can work with them, but it could be with any specific demographic. And we also know that if we have a region that partners the way Franklin County does and is willing to work with a whole host of other partners and really, you know, build the, build a plane as we fly it, that they can do it in any region if we can do it here. And that's it. Any questions?
I have one.
Yes, I know, here, yes.
What's kind of like the age range that you were working with?
The youngest, it can be any age, but the, the youngest one was 21 and the oldest one was 41. Yes.
I think I saw a news.
Yeah.
Report on this, and there was someone familiar in that who is on this commission.
Yes, Ross. Yes, Ross, Ross, for those that don't know, is my son. He's one of the three people in the region that could teach NCCER, and he was the only one agreed to do it, which was a little bit of pressure. But, and we also, because he does come as a project engineer, he also had the construction site experience, and he also works for the city of St. Albans at Hardak. So it really was, and he was the one that conceived the idea of doing these sheds, and it actually worked out wonderfully. So Ross has a baby due in March 4th, but I think I've twisted his arm one more time and he'll do one more season with us.
That's great.
Any other questions?
You called this a, you called this a pilot.
Yep.
Is there going to be any additional work of this nature now that the pilot has kind of proven it can?
Yes, initially, when the, the Department of Labor had worked with me and committed funds, they said it would be on a three-year declining fund. And I actually found out a couple of weeks ago that we got another $75,000 again for next, this year. So we'll certainly float it out again this year, and hopefully, you know, I might retire in two years, so it might go beyond that, but no. And other regions will have, hopefully, some, some funding. Yeah.
Were there any women?
No, there weren't any women, and we didn't even, we didn't have any apply. I will say, some of these guys, it was mandatory that they attend the program. It was truly very early in the program that they said, okay, yeah, we had to be here, but you know what, this is pretty nice. So, but we didn't attract any women. Vermont Works to Women has a kind of similar program, and maybe that was, was some of that. Yes.
Is there going to be any follow-through to see how the ones who are out in the workforce now, how are they doing?
Oh, we do complete wraparound services. When I work with, I never really get rid of anybody that's Catherine, though. So, you know, I will work with them for, for months. And, you know, they do, sustainability is, is a big issue, as you can imagine, and a lot of that has nothing to do, I will say, I had one guy that just got done on one of these jobs and had nothing to do with his construction abilities, they, they felt the program was amazing, but he had some interpersonal stuff that needs to be dealt with. That's probably not much different than a good share of our workforce, but we wrap around for months on end, and as long as they're under DOC, I can work with them on a professional level and on a personal. So, and vocational rehab, Vermont Department of Labor, and they all have them as caseloads as well. So, yeah, we're not, we're not done, we're not done. The training's done, but the work isn't.
Is there? What happened to the six you lost?
Oh, actually, well, I do know three of them are back in jail. And again, they came to orientation. I think, you know, you have to vet the, you know, you have to vet people for programs like this. I've been vetting for years, and I knew there were a few that probably, but you don't tell them no, you can't go to orientation and see if it could be for you. So I had expected to lose four of those, and then two others, other things happened.
What would be the largest group that you start program, start out with?
To start a program? It would be, I got to tell you, we wonder that all the time, right? And of course, now that we've gone through a pilot, you know, it's going to be a little bit easier, maybe. But at one time, as you saw, we had two other guys that were floating through it as well, some of them, two of them, one of them just taking the courses. Nine guys is a lot. It's really, you know, so if I, if I had anywhere between 10 and 15, 15 would be the max, I don't know if it'd be even, yeah, manageable. Because you don't want to put them in a situation by having too many of them that you can't provide that intense wraparound services on all the other aspects that they need.
Is there anything that works for any of the other regions across the state to get a similar program going?
Yes, I just talked to, um, DJ Massey, who is in, I don't know what part of the state he is in, but yes, I'm already, as I said, they're, they're, they're looking at it and to create something similar.
Could this also, could you also accept people who are going through court diversion rather than coming out of the facility?
Well, it's funny you say that. One of the, when we were on the job site, of course, Martha's Kitchen is right there on Lake Street, right? And we not only attracted the people that were going into Martha's Kitchen, but we also attracted quite a large group of young adults. Some of that was because I knew them, some of it was because my son Ross knew them. And so I started asking questions, and they all wanted to help. And so I started asking questions, well, do you know this one or do you know that one? Well, those people were all counselors at Voc Rehab and other places. So almost all of them are already in the system, being supported in some other way. So what we are considering at the Restorative Justice Center is whether or not we have the, the horsepower and the capacity to start up a youth program similar to this and catch, you know, some of these guys and gals before they get to any other part of our system, right? But as far as our division goes, that would be the only way we might catch them through a court diversion.
Thank you, Kathy. Very interesting, and thank you for the work that you do. No, it's perfect. Next item on the agenda is commission reports. I'm not going to call out where the committee did not meet. At the end, if someone feels that they want to raise a question with a specific committee, I'll provide an opportunity at that time. Finance and operations, Harold. Finance and operations, Harold.
Thank you. We met. We go Monday, this past Monday night. And your profit and loss sheet is included in your packet. But at our meeting, we went over the assessments for the towns this year, and we went over the budget draft, which will be an action item made along this agenda. But as you can see on your profit and loss sheet, it's going to show a fair amount of loss, but that's because new order payments haven't arrived yet, which they will be arriving hopefully in the near, in the future. But we're well within our budget for the fiscal year so far this year. And you can see our liabilities and our assets and everything right now, and I'm trying to be good. If you have any questions on the end of that, I'll try to answer them. If not, I have somebody to plan over.
Any questions?
Just like I say, I really appreciate the detail to which this is presented now. I think a few years ago, we didn't have this kind of detail. Now, I think it's much more effective for everybody to see what's going on. Yes. Thank you.
Got this lady to thank for that.
All of you guys asked that for us.
Anyone else? Thank you, Harold. Project review. Alicia's not here, but Bill has agreed to discuss the business report. Anyone wants to discuss?
If you look at the page immediately after the profit and loss in their balance sheet, you'll see that there were two project reviews at the October meeting. The first is the AT&amp;T Wireless at 41 Lovers Lane, Town of Grand Isle. And the second, and that you can see is a telecommunications tower, 140 foot in height. And like the second project, which is Green Mountain Power, new substation in East St. Albans or the Town of St. Albans, they're both without any substantial regional impact. And they were both, or excuse me, the second was found to be in compliance with, in compliance with the regional plan. They're still working on the first project because they need to have their questions answered. So I assume that the next meeting, there will be some reply from AT&amp;T Wireless relative to those questions, and they might be able to hear on this. Anything that Al or Taylor would like to add to that?
The Grand Isle case is currently in stay.
Okay.
So the 60-day clock essentially has been paused. And that was due to a mutual agreement between AT&amp;T and the town to discuss some issues between AT&amp;T and the town. So we may not have the action on that next month, maybe a little bit longer. But yeah, fair summary.
I missed the meeting in Grand Isle on Friday, but according to the islander this week, they are actively exploring the sheriff's office as being.
It's uncertain location.
Okay. I think, yeah, I don't think there's a lot of progress for a couple of months.
We asked.
We, we did.
We wanted to do all of the other sites that they didn't want.
We asked for an evaluation of, we asked for AT&amp;T's evaluation of potential sites in Grand Isle. And I haven't received no contact from AT&amp;T since I submitted that letter to them about two weeks ago.
So no action is required of this mission on the basis of those projects, from project review. Thank you. Transportation Advisory Committee, Harold.
We met, and as Al wanted in your packet here, and what we discussed, it was actually quite Bethany presented to us the, how they actually take in our inventory on all the bridges and culverts and everything in the state of Vermont. And we were really quite interested, even myself, that's been involved in this a long time, that there's actually some places you can go. And while there, and actually, we looked at that culvert, without somebody going out there and actually, very, very interested. She's been with us, that's the actual presentation that are back in there. And the other thing was that was quite disturbing to us, I thought, but I think we probably knew what was coming, was the money from the bridge, causeway being taken out, that the projects that were out there, there's going to have to be a 20% match. We couldn't use in-kind, it had to be money. And all, as we all know, is you get a money from the state for a project or whatever, you can use in-kind labor, you couldn't offset that match. But because, if I remember this right, Catherine, or whatever, because of spending money, they do not accept in-kind matches. And so that was quite disturbing, and we actually asked if we could, if we have our, we were hoping for in November here to have our legislators there so we could put this question to them, so that they could actually go to my parent and say, hey, look, can we use, if I remember right, people that are on TAC, can we use the money that is, that $2 million that we get every year for water quality stuff, can we use some of that money at each town to offset this match? And Bethany's answer was, I believe, no.
So, right, every question we asked regarding match, other than cash, we got the answer no. But we're going to keep asking.
Yes, keep asking. That's what we're going to do.
So we are going to keep asking. And I have an upcoming meeting with the agency secretary about another topic, and I plan to bring this up as well, to just ask if we can be a little more creative than, than we're looking at it right now.
The last part of our TAC meeting was, like I said, the legislators, we've invited for 1114, but there's a conflict because of the.
Friends in Northern Lake Champlain.
Northern Lake Champlain. So we've agreed at TAC to invite them for our December meeting, which will be 1212. And we really like anybody that from this board here, this commission here, if you'd like to sit in on that meeting to talk to the legislators, the more that you can, you know, the more you poke, the better.
Are we going to do that as a joint with water quality?
Yes, with water quality. Yes, again. And, you know, I just feel we have strength in numbers. And the more towns that are sitting around there asking the legislators, we may find that we're really serious about this, you know, the questions that we're asking, we're not just here trying to make general conversation. We really want to know what can happen. So I would invite everybody that would like to come to that meeting to come to it on 1212.
Where is that? Do you know where it is?
It hasn't been set yet, but it more than likely will probably be at a hospital again. I'm guessing.
Could you send me a notice out for that, Catherine?
Yes, I already have the sentence almost written to remind myself that I should get that.
And that's the day after our annual dinner, so maybe we can remind people.
Very my day, I guess.
Details are, if you would like.
Thank you, Harold.
I always had a question.
Yes.
Going back to the earlier proposition, can the town build, build, send an invoice to the state or whatever, the construction for their labor as a way of getting the money back so it's not a double dip?
If you do that, you could only get reimbursed for 80% of the costs.
80% of the total costs?
Yes, so it would have to be part of the total cost, and then you could only get reimbursed for 80% of it.
Do you come out ahead versus?
No, no, you wouldn't. It would have to be added to the total cost of the project and be part of the overall total cost. And then, even then, I'm not sure that with federal money, that the state can just delegate it to the town unless the town meets all of the federal requirements of that money with its road department.
Okay, but the government, as I understand the formula, then the federal government isn't paying 80%. You had, what they've already invested, plus the cash they have to, that's whatever that total is against the total budget, we're reducing 80% to something less.
Not the way I'm thinking of it in my mind, so we can talk later, but.
And the reason we're really concerned, and Catherine makes sure, we're agreed, and everybody else that was on that, is some of these projects that have been, there was a list of projects.
And Bethany presented that.
Yes.
For last meeting, right?
There was a list of projects. Some of these projects are in the $300,000 range. And the town has got to come up with 20% of that $300,000 to do a project that really needs to be done, to clean up Lake Champlain. And we at the TAC committee feel, asking a small community, one of them was in Highgate, and that was an expensive one on the Meishy Road to stabilize that riverbank.
That's a million.
That, that town cannot afford a $60,000.
In that case, it would be $200,000.
Right. And that's the, that's the point we're trying to get across, is, is the goal to clean up the water, to improve water quality. And if so, we should be doing the best projects where the best projects are, regardless of a municipality's ability to pay toward that match.
Yeah.
So there should be a solution we can find, recognizing that the state has limited funds, too. So the non-federal match has to come from somewhere. So, you know, the State Agency of Transportation is charged for match as well, for their, the state system match that they have to provide. So we're still hoping we can identify and find a creative solution if we can get folks at the agency who are creative thinkers to work with us on it.
Yep. We're trying.
So I'm still optimistic.
Yeah.
If, for example, the Agency of Natural Resources could invest in it, would that be a match?
One would think yes, but the right person has not been asked that question yet at the Agency of Transportation. So the answers we've gotten so far for that question are no. So I just think the right person hasn't been asked yet.
And at the same time, we were encouraging the large projects to go for this grant.
Right, because it's federal money.
The large parties prioritized it as a way of managing the money.
Right, because it's federal money, so you don't want to go through all the federal hoops for a $20,000 project. It's not cost-effective.
It's catch 22 all the way around.
Yes, it's quite kind of, but we will solve it. I am optimistic still.
Brownfield class?
We're meeting on Monday. We have not met yet.
Well, it says will be reviewed.
Will be.
Perfect. Al, Vermont Economic Progress Council?
They're meeting tomorrow, and there's no Franklin nor Grand Isle applications.
Thank you. GMT Bob?
GMT, the biggest news is the Montpelier Transit Station has been completed. They had their grand opening last week. Bus activity will not begin until November when we do the updated schedules and routes. Three times a year when they do the updates. But the Montpelier is very exciting because it's a joint project of housing, affordable housing, mixed with transit locations and transportation, walking paths and bike paths, and becoming a new center for Montpelier.
I couldn't figure out from the roof they brought, or where.
It's between the river and the state house. So it's on the riverside.
But kind of adjacent to the Capitol Plaza Hotel parking lot where Vermont Transit Station used to be.
Okay.
It used to be a parking lot on the other side of railroad tracks.
It was a scrapyard or something. It's a poor, was it?
It used to all be a parking lot.
Seems like a weird spot for it. That's the big thing.
Thank you. Any other committees have anything to read for?
Can I ask a question? We used to have a downtime board, maybe membership, did that go away?
It did. Yes, it did. We were told that we don't actually have a seat anymore, that the Regional Planning Commission seats went away statutorily, and we just had refused to acknowledge that, so they continued to send somebody.
Until I asked a question.
Yes.
It's your fault.
It is.
You became agonizing.
I was just curious what happened.
Yeah, so that's what happens. But Al was a great member.
It was great. It was an excellent learning opportunity for me. And it was unfortunate that just a common citizen couldn't participate.
But if you were still on the board, you would report that St. Albans Town.
Yes.
Began the process of looking at village designation for the Bay area.
And we had an excellent visit from the state to help the planning commissioner know what they have to do to move forward.
Staff report?
I'll use my staff report opportunity to provide information about a couple of trainings that are upcoming. First, on Tuesday, December 3rd at 6:00 p.m. at Northwestern Medical Center, we're going to have Essentials of Land Use Planning Training. So that training looks at everything from why we develop a plan to how do we implement a plan, to the basics of open meeting law. So it's ideal for your newer planning commission and DRB members, but also a good opportunity to brush up on the basics of land use planning. So hope to have some of you there. Actually, before that, before Thanksgiving, we are having a workshop with Rebecca Samford Stone, who is a consultant, who will be holding a training on placemaking and creative ways to increase local participation on boards. I think it's a fair way to summarize that, Catherine?
Sure.
Sure? Okay. That's on Thursday, November 21st at 6:00 p.m., again, at Northwestern Medical Center in the Green Mountain Conference Room.
And I, she's really good. This consultant that we're bringing in to give this training is really good. I have sat through a lot of meetings and a lot of boring planning processes. I got to sit through what should have been a super boring planning process at the state that she led, that they hired her to do, and she made it actually enjoyable. So I'm excited that we have the opportunity to bring her here.
And she's got some really great real-life experience in Vermont. She lives in Bethel and has brought a lot of creative projects to that small town, especially in the wake of Irene. So I think she understands the scale of a lot of our, a lot of our communities and can just provide some insightful ideas of how to be creative locally to get more people involved.
Time again?
It's at 6:00 p.m. on Thursday, November 21st at Northwestern Medical Center.
Yeah, Wednesday's got it. There's some fires there.
Yes, so we have to handle that. Besides that, working on a big EDA grant, but I will let Emily talk about that and introduce herself.
Did you warn her that she would be doing that?
What's that?
Did you warn her that she?
I did, I did warn her, yeah. This isn't without warning.
Yeah. Yeah, so we've been working on an economic development, oh, it's the A.
Administration.
Administration, there's a lot of A endings. Disaster Resiliency Grant for Franklin and Grand Isle County, really focusing on supporting the agricultural industry, including a lot of work that Healthy Roots Collaborative, who's just sort of taken under our wing, is doing with technical assistance and also an apprenticeship program for high school students, also some equipment upgrades, hopefully a vehicle for Healthy Roots to do some distribution of food. And then also some sort of strategic planning that we can provide to municipalities around, basically.
Flood resiliency.
Flood resiliency, yeah.
Flood resiliency is the key term, so.
Yeah, flood resiliency.
So some funding for NRPC staff to work with municipalities on town plans, development regulations, also developing some model regulations for on-farm businesses, which was recently enabled in state statute. Also, helping with outreach to municipalities, once FEMA provides municipalities with updated floodplain maps in the Siskiyou Basin, which should be happening within the next two years. And then also the northern Lake Champlain Basin, that'll be a little bit further off. But we've applied for about a half million dollars of grant funds, or will be applying for a half million dollars of grant funds tomorrow. We're hopeful. We had a really great meeting with some rental partners a few weeks ago. So, yeah. Any questions on that growing up?
Vehicle for Healthy Roots, are you looking for money for that?
Yeah, so there would be money allocated in the grant to purchase a vehicle for Healthy Roots to use for commercial agricultural product distribution.
But you're looking for grant money as opposed to donate money?
Correct, so yeah, this is a grant to the EDA. There's a 20% match.
We'll take donations.
Yeah, sure, if you want to donate to provide our local match.
I'm thinking of Rotary has helped.
Yeah, Rotary helped purchase the last van with the CBOEO, right? Yep, and that's already at max capacity. So right now, we are, we can submit the grant to EDA without having the match sources identified, but we've been encouraged by our federal partner to submit the grant as soon as possible. It's a rolling application process, so we're submitting it even before we start doing all that extra work to find the match.
Okay, so if you want to come to Rotary, we'd be more than happy to talk.
Thank you.
Do we need our foundation in place to be able to get the donations?
We have other options we can use if the foundation is not in place by the time donations come, but we are including the foundation as one of the pieces in the grant just to start building it in.
And the farm business projects you were talking about, that sounds like that might be something that would tie into our interest in trying to give other options for farmers, farming, land, et cetera, and that might be something we consider within the foundation too, because I'm not sure.
You're talking about the apprenticeship portion, is that what you're talking about?
You mentioned something for businesses on farms.
Okay, so this is talking kind of about the one-on-one technical assistance to farmers that help your work provides.
I think you're talking about working with municipalities to enable the on-farm businesses.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Yep, so that could fit in nicely as well. Really, most of the components except for the land use planning parts could fit quite nicely in the foundation.
Yes.
So I'd like to hear more about that as a point.
Yes.
Just while I have the opportunity, I think it might be great to add a calendar to this packet so that it actually shows the different things and we could actually then look at that and between our phones, our calendars, if they match.
I like that idea.
Has Emily been before the board before?
Yeah.
Do you want to introduce her?
She didn't introduce, well, she was kind of wrong while she was setting up the thing.
I'm Emily Koff, I'm the America Cor Vista currently serving at NRPC. So I started in August, I will be here until next August, and I'm a new UVM graduate, so excited to be here.
And where are you from?
I'm originally from Massachusetts.
Okay, we'll forgive you.
Yeah, I know. I've been here for a while.
And your degree's in what?
My degree's in political science.
And we put our right to work on this big giant EDA grant. That's great.
Anything else you'd like to report on your staff?
I'll just add, there's a lot going on. We've all been super busy, as you can see if you looked at the staff report. The only thing that's probably not in there that is new is working with many partners, including Swanton. We are submitting a Working Communities Challenge Letter of Interest tomorrow. The Working Communities Challenge is a grant program through the Boston Federal Reserve Bank, and it provides up to $15,000 planning grants for multi-jurisdictional coalitions to do a planning process to identify action projects that relate to systems change that benefits low and moderate income people. So we are working with lots of partners to submit a letter of interest that looks at the four and before, which is what we've always talked about recently, that Kathy coined the phrase actually, to look at the four impediments that interfere with someone's ability to be successful in the workforce typically, and that's transportation, housing, substance use, and childcare. So we'll be looking at those four areas with our partners and figuring out where they might intersect and where might there be some actions we could take as a region or as a coalition of towns to actually make some improvement in people's lives to enable them to be more successful in the workforce by overcoming some of those challenges. And once you complete the planning process, the bank will be awarding three or four implementation grants statewide of up to $300,000, so there's opportunity to get funding to actually implement your plan as well. So that's going in this week, the letter of interest, and then the application itself is due in December.
Yes, Al.
So town St. Albans just is in the process of changing its land use, and we will be making town-wide areas for childcare.
Oh, I heard that, yeah, that's great.
Where we have two major interests in two separate facilities for childcare, along with city on Lake Street.
Yep, so that's great.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the municipal assessment rate options. The Finance Committee met, it's in your packet here, and consistent with the policy is making a recommendation for a 3% increase from the previous year based on the 2010 population assessment.
I'll make that motion.
A second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I'm glad that it's a great rate. How do you make an appeal?
Absolutely.
Crazy for terms. Well, we hit out of the NRPC because we tend to.
I do have a question. Swanton, is that, do you know if that comes to the general fund to the town?
It does.
Yeah, that's the same for Ennisburg as well, so the villages are incorporated that way.
Personnel policy update, Catherine, could you take us through a summary?
I can take it. Unfortunately, Joe got held up for the flight delay, so was unable to be here tonight, and so I will pinch hit for him, in keeping with the theme of the evening. Is that all pinch hits?
You're a long ball hitter.
So the personnel policies have, what you see before you is a pretty, there's a lot of markups, there's a lot of changes that are shown in the document. The Personnel Committee took about a year to go through it and work with an attorney and make a lot of changes. The changes really fall into several categories. We removed all the pronouns, so there's no more she, he, it's all just reworded to remove pronouns. There's a lot of language that I do understand when some people read can seem rather harsh, reflecting Vermont's at-will nature of employment, and it seems like every personnel policy, the attorney recommendations are to tighten that language up even more every time we update the policies. We, there included in there is modification to bereavement leave, so the committee recommended increasing the bereavement leave, and then two changes to parental and medical, which I'll touch on in a second. There were updates to reflect new Vermont law on crime victim leave, telecommuting, sick leave, harassment and non-discrimination, all those that had been updated since we lasted our policies. And then there was a modification to the evaluation process and some of the management processes that are included in there to reflect how we've actually evolved those processes over time. And then there was an addition of a social media policy, which is very long but is also very comprehensive. The parental and medical leave that was added, I just wanted to call everyone's attention to the Executive and Personnel Committee are recommending adding six weeks paid parental leave and then creating a long-term leave bank for family medical leave. So if you or a member of your family is ill and you need to miss work to care for them or you need to miss work because of your own illness, you could use this long-term leave bank. Employees would be granted two weeks upon hire for the leave bank and then accumulate a week every year up to a maximum of six weeks. And then you use that and can replenish it as needed. So those are the two additional paid leaves that were added to the policies, and the bereavement leave, as I said, was increased a little bit. That is the summary of the changes in a nutshell, but I'm happy to answer questions or any members of the committee might be happy to answer questions as well.
Yes, I'd just like to say that one of the reasons the Executive Committee, at least from my perspective, wanted to provide more to the employees relative to the leave policies and the bereavement and wherever else it might come up is that we have great staff working for us, and we really appreciate what they do and we want to make sure that they stay with us as long as possible. So having an attractive package of benefits that are especially useful to them, because I know Catherine's talked to them about some of the ideas that were floating around and then actually gotten some feedback online, I think is really important for not only the commission but for the towns, because all of us do get so much from the staff time when they come and work with us in the town. So I'm very supportive of this, and I really appreciate the work they're putting into this by the committee to make all these changes, strongly supportive.
Thank you, Bill. Others?
Can you explain if a person comes down with some form of cancer, which takes well over a year of chemo and radiation therapy, how would this policy apply to that person who's going to be in and out of the office multiple times and probably for three or four weeks during radiation, things like that?
So there's two ways that this policy would impact a person in a circumstance like that. The first is that they could take the unpaid leave as allowed for under Vermont law, but under this policy, if they've accumulated the full six weeks of pay leave, they could use that at any time, you know, they could take it in chunks as needed, and they also could use any of their accumulated personal account time. Additionally, though, what we do have is we have short-term disability insurance. So for a person who's out for really the extended time like that, it's really the short-term disability insurance that would pick up the covering some salary for that person. So we have both short and long-term disability coverage. Short-term, I think, is 50% of salary, and long-term, I think, is 60 or 70, it's a higher amount, the long-term disability. So those insurance programs would kick in for the longer term.
Is that what we're seeing?
It was listed in the benefits section, yeah, but now that our attorney recommended taking that out and adopting a separate benefit sheet that you review every year with the budget, so that's what we'll start doing, and it is currently a benefit.
I would like to thank the people who worked on this. It created a lot of discussion, a lot of, I don't know if compromise is the right word, maybe collaboration is a better word, but a lot of discussion about where are the right balance points, what can we do best for our staff. It still is, you know, very good benefits, but not necessarily out of reach of what's reasonable for expectations, and I actually learned a lot in listening to some of those discussions, so thank you to everyone who worked on these.
I'll make the most of it. Personnel policy changes, that's presented.
Second. Any other discussion? Yes, Al?
Yes, I thought about it, again, primarily because of my own experience that I think too much emphasis is based on at-will, it doesn't, not very comforting to an employee. That's one of my major issues with the way it's written. As I mentioned to Catherine earlier, some technical aspects, which I feel in terms of an employee wanting to review a grievance, that make it more difficult to have an objective review. And just on a very small portion, the issue around employment of veterans or not giving them any benefit for their service, I can find somewhat difficult, thinking there's two equal candidates, but one's a veteran, the veteran ought to be given priority. And I'll let it go with that. I just want to express concern over the long-term issues, so I could abstain, will be just the same thing, so maybe I'll abstain as opposed to saying no.
Thank you for your comments. Others? I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. The motion carries. Thank you.
To Al's point, or related to Al's point, we have had a longstanding benefit of our personnel policies that no one's ever taken us up on so far, but we do provide pay for people who are in the National Guard and have to do their advanced training every year and go away for a couple of weeks, we cover that time. So that's something, that's something.
I saw that, and I can tell you practically, if a person is called up to be deployed.
Yeah, that's something different, yeah.
The leading issue there is not so much the pay, it's the medical care. Military health insurance doesn't switch in until the person's deployed. It can be as much as three to four months, three to four weeks before. So I had a situation where, and it was in the hospital when the soldier was deployed, called up to active duty. Under the policies, health insurance terminated at the end of the month, leaving that job without benefit, because Tricare wouldn't pick him up until the person was deployed. So again, what I did without any authority was to just extend the health insurance of that employee so that his baby was covered. But there are some legal issues, I don't think we have any active reserve officers now.
Not at the moment.
But just be aware, if you do, you do have to watch, go carefully for their families. I think it's okay what you've done, it's a family issue.
Yeah, great point.
Excuse me, didn't it say in there somewhere when if an employee leaves or is terminated, the insurance will be carried for four weeks or more?
And the attorney did let me know that, as part of my conversations with her, that should we ever want to, this is a board-adopted policy, so we could waive, adjust as needed if we have a special circumstance that arises and we wanted to make some adjustments.
We've had a recent.
We have had a recent example.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. It's always a topic that raises a fair amount of discussion.
Worried.
And rightfully so. Next item is the fiscal year 19 audit. There's a draft enclosed. I hope that as you all read it and stayed awake through it, that you understood it better than I did. I've read these audits the last couple of years, and I've read a lot of audits in my life, and I usually can pick up an audit and I can read it and very quickly figure out if there were any discrepancies, if there were any issues. This one, I've read it twice, I can't think, nowhere says clearly there's no problems.
There is a place where, I went through it, there is a line that says there are no discrepancies or issues.
It's.
It was buried in the last slide.
I'm not saying the audit wasn't well done, but I would recommend that we ask for a much more concise executive summary in the future.
It's not an easy read. And I think that the Finance Committee, as Richard had pointed out, that nowhere in this report does the name of the audit encompass.
Right, yeah. And the final, they give us a cover page with that, but yeah.
And I believe we also brought up the fact that, is it this coming year is going to go up for bid again?
We have one more year and then we'll watch it. Yep.
Possibility.
So I'm not saying it was a poor audit, I just wish they'd do a better job presenting the results to us, and I think we should make that recommendation.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Clear as mud.
So Catherine, why don't you give us a brief summary so that we have some, we can act on it?
Sure. So the brief summary is that we ended the year $64,809 in the black, which is about where we anticipated we would be, partially due to some surplus in a couple of programs, but half of that is because of our delayed maintenance construction project on the building that we had budgeted for in FY19 that we're going to complete now in FY20. So we had carried those funds forward already into the FY20 budget, assuming that that surplus would be there, so it did show up and that was good. So we did end up in the black, we ended up about where we thought we would be. That you can see if you looked to many different pages, but page five will show you a good summary of our revenues, our expenditures, the change in our fund balance, and then our current fund balance, which is at $470,000, $470,172. So our fund balance remains healthy and provides us with the cushion that we need to, with our fluctuating cash flows. Something that's different in the audit this year that I want to call your attention to is actually. to is actually, the, you'll see it show up once on page four, but then there's a chunk of pages in the middle, starting at.
15.
Page 12, which is, we now have a big chunk of the state municipal retirement fund's own audit from KPMG stuck into our audit, so that whole, there's several pages there, I think it goes seven pages, that is a description of how you get to our portion of the pension liability that shows up into our audit. So the, in terms of the pension liability, we have a liability of $102,000 in pension, in the pension fund right now, but we have a net investment of $104,000, so we are actually above water on the pension, even though overall the pension is underfunded at the, from the whole pension program, but because we're still new enough in the system, our benefits and our employees aren't fully vested, we are not upside down on the pension right now.
Is there a way to be upside down, right?
We will be eventually.
But the mission, upside, I mean, but if it was upside down, you wouldn't be responsible, it's a state issue, right?
Well, it is a state issue, but, but we, it will show up on our audit.
I understand showing up, but there's no, no cash bill.
Right, we're not going to get a bill, right, but it does show up as a liability on our audit.
Unless at some point in the future the state decided to fix it that way, right? And they have been nothing.
True. They're going to have a hard time doing it.
Yeah.
Are other employees on the pension at this time?
Nobody is taking any, but everybody is participating.
Right, so everybody's.
Everybody's contributing.
And then, do they analyze the workforce as it moves forward in age to that fund growing so that when, let's say, five of nine people reach retirement age, that is going to be adequate to cover their pensions?
They don't analyze us specifically, but they analyze the whole pool, they have a team of actuaries that work on the pension, and it is currently inadequate and underfunded, and that is part of the state of Vermont's budget issue, is having to consistently fill that back.
And they, they changed contributions from employees this past year, so our contributions went up as a percent of our income.
So they have a plan where the employer and employee contributions are each going up at a higher rate than what the actuaries predict is needed to meet the pension obligation so that it can close that gap with the under, the current underfunding.
We're in B, right?
We're in B program, correct.
And you probably haven't, but you will maybe because you just started last year, so this December, January, you will be supported in the state of Vermont, so you're actual retirement, how much you probably expect to get.
And then it is buried, and it is really hard to find, but if you look on, oh, you did, if you look on the very last page, under compliance and other matters, the last sentence of that paragraph does say, no instance of non-compliance are required, they discovered no instance of non-compliance that are required to be reported. So in summary, there were no findings. There was, we were not given, oftentimes an audit will come with a management letter, which is a letter to the management, to the board, that describes problems that were found or recommendations that were made, we did not have any, any items that rose the level of being included in management letter, so there is no management letter that accompanies this audit.
So what we're asking for is a management letter that says the management letter's not included.
Yeah, I think that that's a really great idea, because typically the management letter is much more plain English.
Yes.
And has those recommendations, but since we don't have any, we don't get that, so I think asking the one that says that.
The management letter, the management letter expressing the positive results.
Yes, a management letter saying that there are no recommendations, and that would be really helpful, so I will pass that along.
Thank you.
Does Kurt, you have to fill out the question we have from?
Do I have to?
I've got it.
No one has told me that I have to.
I think it's just you, it's Trevor.
Just.
It doesn't.
I never planned to fill that out.
You never had to fill one out either? That's odd because you're authorized to sign. I don't know, why wouldn't be.
Authority, but no responsibility.
It's just the authority. Because his name isn't on the check, your name is.
But it can be.
But it's not.
So could I get a motion to accept the results of the audit? Got a motion and a second. Other discussion? I would just like to compliment the staff and the work that the Finance Committee and others have done that get us to a point where we don't have any issues that we need to resolve through audit. Thank you.
Thank you years in a row, as he's been.
Somebody?
We had one, three or four years ago.
No. It was like eight or nine years ago.
I know it wasn't a pleasant meeting.
Seems like it.
Somebody was back.
But work well done, and thank you all. Any other comments, discussions before we vote? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Any commissioner announcements? I would like to just remind everyone that we don't have a November meeting, but there are some very interesting meetings that will be going on in relation to the, to the Regional Planning Commission, if you can attend. Our next meeting will be on December 11th at the museum, it's our yearly meeting there with dinner provided, and I'm sure we'll come up with an interesting agenda for that meeting.
I have one thing.
Yes.
Most are aware that Route 78 in West Walton will be closed from 7:00 PM on Saturday, this Saturday, till 6:00 AM Monday morning, for Culver, so seventy mile detour unless you know how to maneuver through Church Road and Campbell Bay Road.
But don't tell any truckers.
No, trucks will be allowed. Trucks will not be allowed to.
Trucks will be allowed. But those roads are pretty, pretty small.
Yeah, trucks will not be allowed.
Thank you for reminding us. Any other?
And the Sons and the Islands only warn you if you're driving away from 78, they don't warn you if you're ahead of 78.
Well, one of them in Albert has a long time to.
One on the corner. 6:00 PM on Monday night.
I did call Jim.
But after they set up the 50 of them inside, you probably forgot.
Anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, everyone.